I'd like to call the February 4th City Council meeting to order. Kevin, would you read the roll, please?
Mayor Yanish. Mayor Protam Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Amon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dokken. Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Six present, two absent.
Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, we certainly have a nice crowd here this evening, and we'll get into that in a little bit. First of all, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? And then we'll move to the consent agenda.
Would you approve my second?
There's been a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
I'd like to pull item G, W C E R Joint Powers Board Meeting.
Okay, Councilmember Amon. So could I have a... We have a motion on the table. We will remove item G. So all in favor of the other items, please say aye.
Aye.
If those that passes. Councilmember Amon?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The question I had was on the discussion that was on the amphitheater at Robins Island. There is appropriation of $5,000 that's given to Andy Beer with Ingham and Associates for the pre-design and schematic design. I'm just curious, doesn't that usually go through Public Works? Why is the Joint Powers agreement dealing with the issues of public facilities?
This was an... They're an advisory group, and so this was their advisory recommendation to move forward with this. It can also be discussed at Public Works Public Safety.
I'm just curious why it hasn't been brought up. I know it was brought up... I think Mr. Dokken wanted it on the committee at the Community Development Committee meeting a while back. He asked the person that was in charge of this to come forward. He never did. I'm just curious why it's gotten to this point without any input from the City Council as to location, costs, ownership. It seems like everything's been done without any input. I'm just curious why we haven't been informed of the process or been involved in the process to date. It's a pretty large structure, and it would change the whole makeup of Robins Island as to where its location is. And it seems like right now, there's... It's already... It's beyond any input from us unless it comes to us, and we have to rubber stamp it. I'm just curious, why it hasn't gone through the process like normal?
I think it's been... I think it has been going through... I think this is a citizen brought forward, this effort as a privately... That it would be privately funded and has met with the Community Ed and Rec Board because it is a park and rec function as well, and had some discussion on the air. And I believe the individual also met with council members individually. It's not a fully formed plan at all. The schematic design would simply be to begin to put some form and function to even what the cost would be so that he would... That the individual could bring forward a plan to propose to the city.
Well, my question is why they're appropriating $5,000 on projects that usually the council has complete... Usually that always goes through Public Works on any community project that we build. Why? I've never seen this through the years before ever been done through another committee. Just wonder why it's being done this way.
I think in this case, we took it first to Community Ed and Rec to see if there was any interest there because ultimately it would be programmed as such by... As a community ed and rec facility. And if there really wasn't any buying at that level, we didn't feel that it would even go forward from there to the council. And so the next step would be coming to a Public Works Public Safety Committee. But this is an advisory. So I mean, that... There was... They made an advisory recommendation that the city should proceed with this. And that's what it is, an advisory recommendation.
And where does... Where do they expect the $5,000 to come out of?
If we were to go forward with it, then that would come through our funds at the city in part and then through Community Ed and Rec's budget.
Is that something that's been appropriated for this year?
It has not. No. I mean, again...
So we'd have to...
Again, Councilmember Amon, this is an advisory recommendation.
Well, that's why I guess I'm bringing it up. An advisory recommendation is advisory recommendation, but they're appropriating money for a project that we haven't seen the schematics on. We don't know where the location is. We didn't know anything about it, very little about it on the council. I'm just wondering why this shouldn't be just brought to the Public Works Committee to discuss since it's going to go through our... It's not in the budget, and it's going to have to come out of some other funding through the Finance Committee to make up the $5,000. Also, the $5,000 or the $10,000 estimated cost doesn't show or reflect what you're going to get for it. And I'm not sure if that money is of $10,000 or even $5,000 is appropriate not knowing what the size of the project is. So it's really hard for me to support something like this without having information.
Could I maybe ask for clarification? When we get an advisory recommendation like that, can... They can't actually appropriate the money. Is that right? I mean, it will have to come through a committee.
That's correct.
To be appropriated. So this is a citizen-driven request coming forward, and it will come through the system, Councilmember Amon, I believe. I understand your concern, but it will be coming forward.
Well, it says here that there's been a written proposal from Andy Beer and Ingham and Associates.
Proposal for the scope of work?
Yeah. I didn't realize they were... Or Mr. Brizendine is capable or able to or has the authority to spend that money without it coming through the Public Works Committee. It doesn't seem right.
Well, again, I... They can't appropriate the money. They've made the recommendation. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Several months ago, I was... Got an email from the individual that is working on this amphitheater, and I think it was four months ago. And he asked to meet with me personally about it. And I said, "Well, it really should go through a committee meeting." So I just called Mr. Dokken and arranged to have it at Community Development. He didn't want to do that, but he did call Mr. Dokken. And he gave Mr. Dokken the same... Or Mr. Dokken gave him the same answer, "Bring it to a committee." And he hesitated to do that, and I'm not sure why. So I agree with Mr. Amon. It seems like they're kind of circumventing our committee process. And it does say in here that they voted to engage an architect for the proposed amphitheater, and it carried. So if we approve their minutes, what does that mean? That the... We're approving the $5,000? And again, the scope of it, I don't know.
I think if the council would like to see this at the Public Works Public Safety Committee, there's no problem in doing that and such. I mean, I think the intent here was for myself and Mr. Brizendine was to bring this forward and see if there was interest in this project at the Joint Powers Board because it would be ultimately a recreation facility. And that's where the individual also made a presentation. And I think Councilmember Johnson was present at that meeting as well. But I think that was to start to gauge if there was interest in it. And the next step would be to try to then develop more of a scope of work and such. And so if there's an interest in having this now come before a committee before we go further, we certainly can do so.
I would prefer...
The dollars have not... There's been no dollars that have been spent. The proposal was, you know... The proposal was requested also to start to be able to give us a scope of work and understanding because what we've had up to date are kind of some rough ideas and such, but we don't have any designs, and we don't have really any estimate of probable cost to even go much further, other than it's a very nice idea.
It seems appropriate, though, to bring to a committee first. I mean, instead of... My question wasn't answered. If we approve these minutes and they approved spending $5,000 to engage an architect, we're approving that, or...
No, I don't think that you are. I mean, I think you're, you know, you're accepting their advisory recommendation, but ultimately you have the final say in that.
Mr.?
Yeah, Councilmember Amon.
One other item on here, too, is that it's stated that we would own and maintain structure. That hasn't been decided yet. Who's making the decisions? The board or the city? You know, there's just some things that need to be clarified here. It's not that I don't want to support the project. I think it's fantastic.
Right, I understand that.
The project, I think, is great. All the positive things that can come out of it, and I support it. I just wonder why it hasn't gone through the process that we normally handle in the past.
Well, I don't think we've had a lot of projects like this in the past where an individual's come before us. And I think, for me, maybe the confusion has been a little bit that it is ultimately a recreational facility, and we have a Joint Powers that looks at our recreational facility. So maybe we did bring it... So maybe I did bring it to the wrong place first. But we can certainly, you know, still... I mean, it's still very... There's no project on the table. There's no... You know, we're still in that early stages and such. And the next... We've had a lot of conversations about this project. And if we're going to go forward in any way, at some point, we do have to engage somebody to begin to understand what the full scope and such would be like. And that was the next step. And so we can have that discussion at Public Works Public Safety. We can have that discussion at Community Development, wherever the council feels it's most appropriate to have that.
Okay, so we then are assured that we're not appropriating the money by approving the minutes or actually accepting the minutes in the case of this particular...
Yeah, and I guess the example I would use is that is you also have in here some minutes from the Community Center Advisory Council, and they voted to terminate a contract the city has with a vendor for cleaning. And by accepting those minutes, I mean, again, they don't have the authority to terminate that. That is their recommendation to do so, but they don't have the authority to do that. And you've accepted those minutes, so you're not... Again, it's an advisory recommendation.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Do we need a motion then to send this to a committee or roll it out automatically? I don't...
I don't think you need to do that. I think you've made clear that you would like to do so. So you... You can if you wish, but I don't think that's necessary.
I'll be fine with that as long as we're clear that this... All these actions have to be approved by the City Council prior to moving forward with it and refer it to the Public Works Committee. I just wanted to get it out in the open. Thank you.
So would you make a motion then to accept?
I'm going to accept the minutes as presented by Mr. Mayor Protam.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
If that passes. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a scheduled hearing on a vacation of tree planting and maintenance easement. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to that subject? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing and come to the council. What would be the request or the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Christensen?
I'll move that we adopt the resolution to vacate the easement.
Second.
Further discussion? Councilmember Fagerly?
Shouldn't we have staff tell us what it's about so the public knows?
Probably a very good idea.
I can cover it. I can handle this. Mr. Peterson is absent this evening. The Central Lakes Cooperative purchased a property at 302 Eighth Street Southwest. And during... And in that purchase process, it was noticed in the title work that there's a tree planting maintenance easement that isn't very well defined. And you can see a picture of it up... Of the property up there. It's right at Eighth and Litchfield. And so the recommendation is that the city vacate the easement. It's not an easement that's necessary. It's not an easement that we utilize. We've verified with Public Works and the municipal utilities that they have no issue with the vacating of the easement. And it's also just been poorly defined, and it's no longer needed. The Planning Commission reviewed it and discussed it, and their recommendation also was to approve the vacation of the easement.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks.
Further discussion? That's a roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. We have something new tonight. The next item on our agenda, I'm going to call on our Fire Chief Gary Hendrickson to talk about some of our new officers.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and mayors of council. Tonight, I felt it was important to introduce four of the department's newest firefighters who have just finished their probationary period with the department. In years past, I understand that this has not been a standard practice, yet with the demands of each firefighter's personal lives, I felt it was important accomplishment and need to be recognized within a public forum. Each of the firefighters being recognized this evening, on average, worked 215 hours attending fire calls, worked an additional 182 hours attending training to be able to operate effectively on the scene of an incident. Additionally, in today's society, I believe it's important that it's a sacrifice for the firefighters themselves, but also a huge sacrifice for their families. As a firefighter, many birthdays and holiday celebrations are missed because of the commitment each firefighter made to serve the community. Therefore, I also like to recognize these firefighters' family and thank them for their support. I will now administer the oath of office for our new firefighters. As I call your name, please come and stand to my left and face the camera up here, please. Jesse Hyatt. Actually, to my left, sorry. Jim Delaio. Got it right, Jim. Gentlemen, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Of the State of Minnesota. And faithfully discharge the duties. Of the Office of Firefighter. The City of Wilmer. The City of... Excuse me, of the County of Candy, Ohio. The State of Minnesota. To the best of my judgment. And ability. So help me God. As a firefighter for the City of Wilmer. I accept this oath. And hereby dedicate my fire service career. To the protection of lives and property. Congratulations. This evening, Jesse's daughter is going to come up and present him with his badge. And then Leroy's wife Christina is going to come up and do his this evening. Thank you. Gentlemen, congratulations. I appreciate all your hard work and your dedication to the City of Wilmer, and I look forward to many years of good service as you continue on the department. Mayor Protam and the other members of council would like some brief information from you. Just kind of give a little bit of introduction of yourself and what employer that you work for at this time. Leroy?
Need to come to the podium, actually, since I'm filming.
Good evening. My name's Leroy Gabrielson. I've lived in Wilmer since 2007. I'm employed by Battery Wholesale Inc. here in town as a regional manager. I oversee this location, and I also oversee a location up in Bemidji. My wife Christina and my son Landon are here tonight. My daughter Elizabeth could not make it. And I'm a Wilmer firefighter. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ross Livinggood. Somebody probably know me. I work full-time for the Police Department since 2006. I have a pregnant wife and two kids. That's about it.
I'm Jesse Hyatt. Lived in Wilmer since 1999, employed by Thermal King Sales and Service on West Highway 12, a branch from Thermal King St. Paul. Also, 14 years National Guard, two tours in Iraq. I have three children, twin boys that are four, and my daughter that is seven.
Hi, my name is Jim Delaio. Worked for Princeco Incorporated, their headquarters here in Wilmer. Lived in Wilmer for the last 15 years and have my wife and three young daughters.
Thank you. Gentlemen, on behalf of the City Council, the staff, and the citizens of Wilmer, we want to thank you for your willingness to serve our city, and good luck to you, and thanks to all the other firefighters that are here and that serve our city. Well, chief, thank you for doing that. I think that's a very nice touch. Okay. Moving forward, we next have the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Kevin, is there anyone that has signed up?
Mr. Mayor Protam, we have two people. The first one would be Dennis Johnson.
Dennis, please step forward and state your name and address. And you have three minutes to tell us what your concern is.
Okay. I'm Dennis Johnson. Security Coin and Pawn Shop, 320 Southwest Litchfield Avenue, Wilmer. Yes, I'm the one they talk about. I'm the one that got the burr under my saddle. Having a pawn shop in for 25 years, so often we get so much negative feedback from the papers and TVs. I feel like Rodney Dangerfield. We never get any respect. About seven years ago, I told the Wilmer City Council that the national average of problems with pawn shops all over was only 1/10 of 1%. And I checked my numbers at that time, and mine was less than that. And that was for like over 18 years. Now, under the APS system, which you adopted about seven years ago, I find that my problems are even less than the first 18 years. But the beauty of your program is nobody can say that any certain shop has many problems because any shop anywhere in Minnesota could say, "Hey, wait a minute. Let me show you the number of letters of items picked up either by the police or sheriff." On the past seven years being on the system, we have had 21,172 transactions. And just after your last meeting, the newspaper says that we are the only business in town in the practice of accepting stolen property. That really irks me because I think the police have chief said real good things about us and our shop, and I think the paper kind of took that out of context. If you would just visualize, if we have that many transactions, 21,172, 10% is 2,117, 1% is 212, 1/10 of 1% is 21 transactions. In the last seven years, not one year, seven years, we have had six problems. Two problems in Candy, Ohio County, four problems in other counties. I feel in the last 25 years, we have worked with the police, and I feel we've really done a good job. And I think it's a real blessing to live in a city like Wilmer where the chief will sit down, listen to your concerns, but then he always tells me, "Of course, council makes a policy." And I'm not concerned about participating in the APS system. That's... I'm not here for that. I feel it is needed, but I'm only concerned about fairness. A lot of people, they think we just do some mystical thing. And all we do is we buy used merchandise, like anybody in town. We buy gold, which is played up because gold is high. But we buy silver. We buy TVs. We buy guns. We buy game system, guitars. Anything we buy, somebody else in town, you could sell that item, too. We're not the Lone Ranger. And of course, the other part of the business on the pawn part, that's just where they sell their merchandise to us where they want to get it back. The reason I'm here tonight, I want to talk about fairness. I seen your last meeting, and I know you guys understand fairness. I feel the same way. In the last seven years, we have paid the City of Wilmer $29,267.10 in APS fees. And I know they say, "Hey, you can pass that on to the customer." That's true. However, it's very difficult to do that. If you have a person that just lost his job and is in for $50 just to have a little help, it's kind of hard to say, "Ooh, here's 50 bucks, but, you know, I got to have a little bit of that back for the city." Or how about the person that needs $20 just to go to work? Or the person that needs money for medicine for their baby that is sick? It's very difficult to ask it back. I feel, in my case, I just have to pay it myself. In addition to the $29,267.10, which is paid to the city, in the last 15 years, we have had $15,000 just in computer costs. It costs $900 a year just for some of the software updates we need for your system. And then in addition to that, you got to have one good helper. You can't do it by yourself. And I can't think of any other mom-and-pop business downtown Wilmer... It's tough in downtown Wilmer, that could survive paying all of these costs. I was a one-act pony for 18 years, but now with this regulation, you got to have one good-time helper, which I'm real blessed to have. Seven years ago, Mr. Dokken was gracious enough. He took the time, and he came down, and my wife and I showed him what we had to do, say, if somebody brought in and they have 15 pieces of jewelry. It's very time-consuming. Even Liz and myself, it can take a half an hour to an hour to do it properly. And of course, we told you originally, if we're going to be on the program, we're going to do it right. The next item is holding time. That is a mystery for everyone. It's 21 days. When we buy gold or silver coins, we have to do it based on where gold and silver is that day. But three weeks from now, when we want to sell it, it could be way different. Others that come to town, they can buy it, and they're selling it as you walk out the And so that puts us in a very difficult position compared to anybody else that's doing the same thing. Probably the biggest irk to me is people that come from out of town buying gold and silver. When gold was high a couple of years ago, there was somebody in town every other week. And you've seen the big advertisements in the paper. They would probably spend $5,000 in advertising, and they'd be at the Holiday Inn for a week, three, four of them. And they would pay very little for their product. And nothing that they bought was going into the system like we have to do. I feel that all of their items should go into the system. They should pay the police to put their items into the system, and the items that they bought should be hold for two weeks according to the precious metals law. It says, "Hey, if you got a license, say, in Candy, Ohio County, you're supposed to leave the goods here for two weeks before you come and dispose of them." And guns, you see a lot in the paper about guns recently. If any one of you would come in and sell me a gun, I would have to put all the information about you from your driver's license and all the information of the gun into the system. And that would go to the local police and all the departments in Minnesota that's on the system. Then I would have to wait 21 days before I could sell that gun. You could go to another gun dealer in town, and there's several. You could sell them the same gun. They wouldn't... They have to put your information in a gun book that nobody sees. The only times they see that, if there's a shooting or... Nothing goes in the system to the police department about the person selling or about the gun. And what I see wrong there, a bad person could sell a stolen gun. It wouldn't get into the system. A bad gun could come in and sell a gun, and maybe they don't even have the proper right to even own a gun, which wouldn't be shared by other things. And as you walk out the door, they could put the gun up for sale. And it just seems that... It doesn't seem fair that we have to be in business, hold things for three weeks where other ones in town do the very same thing, and they don't have to do nothing. In my opinion, the biggest problem coming up is going to be stolen items and counterfeits on eBay and Craigslist. Who's going to... Who's going to be paying that? Like, if we get stuck paying for all of this, who's going to be paying that? In closing, all I can say, we try real hard to do things in a proper manner, and it's a blessing that we can pay more than anyone else. I feel that the APS system is a good start, it is. But the chief needs more businesses to go along with us. Because if you only feed the system only a small amount of information, the results are going to be very limited. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. That was very informative. Kevin, is there...
Liz Christensen.
I'm here as actually an employee of Security Coin and Pawn, but also a community member. I want you to know, Danny isn't paying me. I'm volunteering to come here, because I think it's really important. I've been working with the pawn shop for over 16 years with Dennis and his partner and his wife. And I just kind of wanted to speak. I told Danny, I wanted to speak, I wanted to continue to advocate and educate people. Some of my friends, when I told them I was working full-time for a pawn shop, they looked at me and they said, what kind of hot stuff do you get? I mean, and when you're talking with different people, right away, we are stereotyped and discriminated against as a pawn shop. And we shouldn't be. We are a resource in this community, in many communities, to help people that are in need. The needs vary. Dennis had touched on a few of them. I've had people that finally got a new job, they had to come in and get a $20 loan because they had to have black tennis shoes for their new job. I see people come in, and they need money for transportation costs, they've lost their job, they need to make a house payment, utility bills. This is the kind of population and what we're seeing come in. And when the recession hit our community, we knew it was hitting two years prior than it was announced by the nation. When gas went up, our regular customers that were purchasing items from us as a business were coming in to make ends meet to next paycheck. Our families and our community are changing, they're living paycheck to paycheck. That's what I'm finding and what I'm hearing. I have a different kind of pulse on the nation. I'm so thankful, because our customers that have come in shed light on what life is doing and what's happening to them. And it's a real neat place to be, to be able to listen, because we're also a resource for referrals. And what I mean by that, I worked in nonprofit for over 14 years in the community, and sometimes we're able to actually retake resources and refer some of these families and different people to maybe to get some help with those things. The other thing I wanted to touch on with being an employee, I first started with pawn shops. I bought my first computer when I was in college from a pawn shop. So I knew they sold items. I mean, you're on a college budget, you have to make things work, and let me tell you, it helped with those term papers immensely. And the second thing we do is we loan, we pawn, they give us an item, we hold it until they have the right to buy it back from us. The third thing we do is we sell merchandise. And the hold of 21 days, I agree and really support, that's an issue I really would like you as a council to think about, maybe changing. Because when I go to buy certain games, and I want to help and give as much as I can, because when people are coming in with items, and they're partying with some valuables, I want to be able to give them what I can the most. But your game systems and things like that fall in value very fastly. So when we take in something like that, a $60 game, I can't pay them 20 bucks for that game, because I'm holding it for three weeks. And by the time it hits my sales floor, it's going to be less than what it is when I first took it in, and that. I also have been a victim of theft. So I can share with some of the people I have come in, one of the things we have developed is a courtesy form, so if people do lose things, we tell them, come in and fill this out, we'll keep an eye for you, open. And with doing that, and that, it has helped to take and build a relationship in our community. The people really trust us as a business. We run, we try to run a very quality business with that. And we're not pawn stars. If we don't know enough about something, we don't have chumlay, and we're calling in the experts. We refer them to our jewelry stores, our music stores, our computer stores. Go talk to them, because they know more, you'll be able to do better with that. So that's one thing. In an ideal ology room, I would like, or world, I'd like you to imagine, if we could take and extend the APS system, what that could do for our community and support our law enforcement to apprehend crime with the criminals and personal stolen items, like to some of the secondhand selling stores, consignment auctions, metal businesses that buy scrap metal. To think about that in the back of your mind, because as things get tougher, we're going to see different things happen. And one of the things I see and would predict is crime is going to go up. And I will have to commend the police. It's been a joy to work with them, when their officers have come in on behalf of other counties to come in and assist. They're supportive, and we want to continue to support our law enforcement and our community members that are losing items through theft and that. So please, think about those two little things that I have taken and mentioned, and I hope tonight that you might took back some education with you. The only other last thing I want to say is, it does take a lot of time when we do put those items in. I've helped people realize they're missing stones in their reins, because I have to count these cluster reins, and some of those stones are over 100 and some stones in them, when I take and put those things. And I encourage members that have not visited us, please come in and visit us and get to know us. And I am glad you know my face now, so you know I work at Security Coin and Pawn, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that's signed up?
No, sir.
Mr. Sullivan?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, member to the council, but I thought Mr. Dawkins was going to be here, and he's not. I sat down before, I didn't want to get up in the middle of the crowd to sign. What I'm here for is to speak real quickly about, you're going to be speaking through the Labor Committee tonight, about an item on the city attorney and city administrator ordinance. You will not find that in your packet, other than the minutes. You will not find the ordinance in your packet. It wasn't there. Mayor Pro Tem approved that. Councilmember Anderson noted that the city of Willmar ordinance followed the League of Minnesota Cities guidelines, and recommended no change at this time. Please look at that ordinance, 989. It needs to be changed. It says "he" all the way through it. And you also now have two members of the negotiating committee from the council that aren't on there. And that should be on there, because if you have an ordinance, the administrator could do her negotiating by herself, or he. So I think a few things need to be corrected on that, instead of just bullet approved. It does not mirror the League of Minnesota Cities. So I think you need to be a little more cognizant of what you're approving. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, then we'll go into committee reports. Labor Relations Committee, Councilmember Amen.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, or Dennis. We met January 23rd, conference room 1445. Mary Yanish was there, Councilman Member DeBleek, Finance Director Steve Okens, and John Sullivan, also President, or myself, Jim Dawkins, Tim Johnson, Dennis Anderson, and our city administrator, Charlene Stevens. Mr. Sullivan questioned if the committee had enough time to sufficiently review the materials prior to the discussion for the organizational analysis. Mr. Sullivan suggested that having a workshop of the council might be a better alternative. Item number two was the consideration of organizational analysis and compensation classification study. Ms. Stevens reviewed the responses to the two requests for proposals issued. Ms. Stevens also stated that there were three responses that had been received for organizational study, and three responses also had been received for the compensation and classification study. For the organizational study, Ms. Stevens noted that the two most qualified responses came from Springstead and Brimire Furzman. Ms. Stevens also stated that the costs were comparable from both of the firms. Ms. Stevens also noted that Springstead had greater familiarity with the city, as well as the Willmar Municipalities and Candy Ojai County, but that Brimire Furzman was a quite well-qualified firm and might offer a fresh perspective. After considerable discussion, Councilmember Dawkins made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, to engage Brimire Furzman of Maplewood, Minnesota, to perform an organizational analysis of the city for the price of $22,500 plus travel expenses. And that motion carried and outmoved the recommendation of the committee. Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. No discussion. The motion on the floor?
I got a question, Mr. ...
Okay. Pardon me, Councilmember Fagerley.
You know, this may be needed, it might not be needed, but we have a city administrator that's been here almost a year and a half now. And when we were looking, we said, well, this will be a new set of eyes. They'll be able to tell us what direction they would like us to go. I haven't seen a committee or a workshop where she's presented anything what she would like to see, or how the city should go in what direction. I think that's important first. Why spend $22,000? It's like a fad right now. Swift County did it, the school did it, Candy Ojai County did it, utilities did it. I just don't see a need right now. I'd like to hear discussion from the department heads and the administrator. We have to pay $22,000 so someone can talk to our employees. We should be able to do that first. They've got good ideas.
Further discussion? I guess I would comment that we did talk about doing this in late summer of last year. We held off on it. It was brought to our attention that we maybe should do it here a few weeks ago, and the council approved the concept. So what we were doing here is just merely following through on what the council had asked us to do. So, is there any other discussion? Councilmember Amen.
Thank you. I have to strongly admit that this is not my forte, reorganizing structure of such a large group. I agree with you, Rick, and Councilman Fagerley, on your opinions and observations. I think, in essence, it is kind of a fad. But also, looking at it from the city administrator's perspective, if I was in her position, I would value an outside source to come in to do the evaluation, rather than from Ms. Stevens herself. And let me know if I'm wrong in this, but sometimes you're better off, although she may have an opinion, or he, or the city staff may have an opinion on what they might want to see done, it may impact their workers that they've worked with for many years. And to create a friendly environment, I think maybe it's better off that we do this. I'm not sure what the results are going to be. I'm hoping that there's going to be sweeping changes here, but right off the top of my head, Mayor, Councilman Rick, I don't see anything really earth-shaking that we're going to be doing as far as organizational structure, but I believe there's room for some changes that might streamline things now that we have the public work director, or the city engineer not being here. That's another whole matter by itself, whether or not we need to. That hasn't really been discussed. So I'm leaning, I don't like the costs. I always don't like spending the cost less than necessary, but if there was another alternative to this, short of having Ms. Stevens do the proposal and showing it to us without offending staff, and not getting a real unbiased opinion, I think these are the guys to maybe do it with. Anyway, that's my thoughts behind it. Whether I'm right or wrong, that's just my thoughts.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I tend to agree with Councilman Amen's remarks, and also Councilman Fagerley's, but I mean, people resist change. And I think the older we get, and the longer we do something, we tend to get real comfortable, and change can be a little bit, just not accepted easily. So I think it's a good idea, and I think it's more likely to come from an independent outside source. And cost, I don't think is that prohibitive. It's reasonable for what we're asking to be done. And I think it'd be very helpful to our new administrator to have that kind of assistance, rather than start imposing changes that she might like to see all by herself. I mean, she's made some changes, it's a slow process, but I think it's, I think this is a timely project, and I think we should move forward with it.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you. I tend to agree with Mr. Fagerley. I'm not opposed to doing a study, but it would be helpful if we had maybe a planning session or a workshop where our administrator could tell us some of her ideas. I know I've spoken, we've spoken before about this, and you had mentioned, I think maybe it was a couple of months ago, that you had some ideas about how things could be restructured as far as staff and departments. And it might be helpful just to have that before we go ahead and hire them and get the job done. Your ideas might be the same as theirs, and we're paying them when you had the idea in the first place. I mean, I would feel more comfortable if we had a, just a one-hour workshop, and you could sit and explain to us, you're fresh eyes to our city also, and I know you have some good ideas. I would prefer to go that route, but to see what, some of her ideas prior to actually hiring. That's my comments. How does the rest of you feel?
Well, the motion on the floor is to engage Brimire Furzman of Maplewood to perform the organizational analysis for the city for $22,500 plus expenses. That's what's on the floor.
Could be amended.
I haven't heard an amendment. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Councilmember Amen?
Yes, moving right along. The committee went to discuss the compensation and classification study. Ms. Stevens also reviewed the two most qualified proposals from Springstead, Inc., and one from public-sector personal consultants. Ms. Stevens recommended Springstead based upon a lower cost of $12,500, and due to their familiarity with the existing compensation system of the city and the city's pay equity situation, specifically how that it was, it is impacted by the Willmar Municipalities and Rice Hospital. Mr. Dawkins made a motion to engage public-sector personal consultants, an amount of $15,000, and that motion failed for a lack of a second. Mr. Anderson, Councilman Anderson, made a motion to engage Springstead, an amount of $12,500, and the motion failed for a lack of a second. After further discussion, it was agreed to table this matter and discuss it further at the next committee meeting. And I would so like to engage everybody's conversation at this time, if that's possible, on this particular subject. If that's possible. If we were bringing it to committee, we're going to be dealing with the same forces. So therefore, I would, I know it may be inappropriate, Mr. Mayor, but I would value any comments on this, on this at the end of the meeting, or at the end of this, the minutes, before we close them, or now. Item number three, the city attorney and city administrator's ordinance is, the committee reviewed the information provided by the city administrator comparing the current city administrator ordinance to the model ordinance suggested by the League of Minnesota Cities. Mr. Anderson noted that the city of Willmar's ordinance follows the League of Minnesota's guidelines, and recommended no change at this time. The committee also discussed the recommendations to create a city attorney ordinance, rather than continuing with the current practice of utilizing a contract to define the duties. Mr. Johnson stated that he was comfortable with the current arrangement of duties defined by contract. After further discussion, it was agreed to ask the city attorney to draft a general ordinance for review by the committee and consider a public hearing.
ordinance for review by the committee and consider a public hearing. And I would move that recommendation.
Is there a second? The motion on the floor is to ask the city attorney to draft a general ordinance for review by the committee and consideration of a public hearing. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Is the work to be done by the city attorney going to, are you going to work off of the old one, the old job description, or duties, or so we kind of know where you're headed?
Councilmember Christensen, I would obviously be happy to take any direction more specific than just draft a general ordinance that the council would like to provide. Lacking that, my approach should probably be to look at what some other cities have done that have specified duties of the city attorney, as well as leave some flexibility to, more specifically, define the duties for the city attorney in a contract that we have, a consulting contract.
I just want to make sure we have a lot of input on it, as a council. So you'll draft the ordinance, it'll come to labor?
It would come back to the Labor Relations Committee to review that ordinance, and then set a hearing, so you would have an opportunity at that point, you know, again, to have further discussion on it, and recommend changes to it before a hearing is set, and then have discussion at a hearing.
Is this something maybe the full council should be in on, as far as, instead of a labor committee meeting, maybe a work session again, so we can all speak? Have our input there instead of at the hearing?
You know, that's up to the council, how you do it. I mean, you typically work through a committee structure and do things through that, and then it comes through the committee and the recommendation, and then the council has an opportunity to discuss it here at the council meeting. But if you wish to have a workshop on something like that, then we certainly can do that as a workshop.
I think it's very important, it's an important ordinance, and I think all input needs to be had by all eight members, or seven presently, but there would be eight when we discuss this. And it saves a lot of time if we do it that, prior to bringing it to the council, we spend an hour here talking about something that was talked about already for an hour to the committee meeting. That's just my own feeling. I would feel more comfortable with it that way, but can you move forward?
I think one of the things that we did, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Aman.
Well, one comment, Mr. Sullivan spoke earlier, and I'd like to address one of his concerns, and that was on the he is in the city administrator's position right now. We didn't feel it was right that we should go to the expense of changing that, just for republishing, just for that particular issue, to redefine the he/she issue. I believe it's, we're by contract with Ms. Stevens right now for a three-year period, and until that's up, you know, we'd have to revise the entire ordinance. And I don't know what the expenses would be, but we're trying to pinch some pennies here, too, with her budget. I just wanted to comment on that for Mr. Sullivan's viewpoint. I do take this very seriously, as far as the city administrator's position. I think if we do it, if we do it now by her contract, that pretty much sets the guidelines. The guidelines from Minnesota, League of Minnesota Cities is just that, they're just guidelines. They're not given specific direction as to every point. But I would like to add that if there is any particular item that we feel, or that Charter Commission does not feel, is being addressed somehow through an ordinance process, I would surely like to hear their thoughts or opinions on that as a group. I think also, through the process of the public hearing, there will be input from the public also on that, and I would value any input that anybody has on that particular subject. That, I hope, answers some questions from people in council people that weren't there.
Thank you, Councilmember Aman. Anything else? I guess I have a question. I thought that we had talked about that the arrangements that we had, the contracts that we had with our attorneys, be it for criminal, or be it for these sessions, pretty much spelled out and identified everything. And I thought we weren't going to enact an ordinance. I thought we were going to go by the contracts. Now, did I have that turned around?
My understanding, unless I am an air, but my understanding from the committee and the discussion was that there was not a desire to change the city administrator ordinance. That ordinance is in existence, and as Councilmember Aman stated, you know, to change, to go through the, to go through the cost of republishing, just because of the gender language in it, was not a necessary expense. And I would make a reasonable supposition that we probably have other ordinances that do that as well, and it's just not timely to spend that, to just change that. But that the council did have discussion, and maybe will later this evening, on item number fif, on the charter amendment. The charter amendment is proposing that the, that there be, that there be a, the duties of the city attorney be enumerated in an ordinance, and that would be the reason for drafting an ordinance. And I believe, and I thought that was the discussion of the Labor Committee, was to draft an ordinance, understanding that it may not, that it would need to be flexible enough to encompass the current arrangement the city has with two contracted law firms or attorneys to provide prosecutorial and civil, and then also to provide flexibility should that arrangement change, so that the ordinance wouldn't necessarily always have to be regularly and continually updated and republished, because there are costs to doing it. And that was my recollection, but certainly would defer to you, or Councilmember Aman, or any of the other council members who were there for that discussion, if I aired in that.
That was my understanding, Charlie.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Christensen.
I just want a definition of this, the motion that you made, is it strictly for the city attorney's ordinance, or is it for both of them?
I understood it to be to draft the city attorney ordinance. But that's Councilmember Aman's.
Yeah, that was, and not the city administrators, or to revise the charter regard to that. And as far as her contract, right now, it's up for three years. If we're going to change, change the contract, which won't be happening for a while yet, I don't see any reason to go and go through all those revisions right now. As far as recommendations from the Charter Commission on the duties, I think they're pretty well-defined right now. And either way, I think it'd be better if we had the authority, or we had the flexibility as a council, as the duties may change in her role, her, or him, or her, 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 him role, hers, or his role, to change that by, just by contract or by ordinance, like with the city attorney. I think it'd be much more cumbersome, and we wouldn't have to go to rerate the charter. And I think we can still accomplish the same thing. But again, I do value the opinion of the Charter Commission.
The short answer, I think, Councilmember Christensen, is it's for the city attorney.
Strictly.
That's what it says.
But the Charter Commission is requesting us to, by changing that 2.081, or to have an ordinance in place for the city administrator's duties, and an ordinance in place for the attorneys. Am I correct in that?
The ordinance exists for the city administrator.
Right. They wanted us to change it, or?
They wanted it, the recommendation from the Charter Commission was for the labor, was it for?
Strictly the city attorney. Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Councilmember Aman.
Item number four was miscellaneous. I asked the status of the adoption of the rules of order, and Ms. Stevens stated that she and Kevin Halliday were meeting with an individual to provide training on the rules of order, and having received no negative feedback from the city council, working under the assumption that the standard code of parliamentary procedures was what the council wished to consider adopting at the March meeting. Mary Yanis questioned the value of the, I just want to elaborate on that, just to update. We have hired an individual, we have found an individual to conduct those meetings, and you're going to be setting that up, correct, Kevin? Thank you very much. Mary Yanis questioned the value of the compensation and classification study, and also Ms. Stevens stated that the suggestion had come from a citizen, and the Labor Relations Committee had agreed with the issues of the request for proposals. Ms. Stevens also reviewed the stated objectives for the compensation study, and stated that it was hard to predict the outcome of the study, because the purpose was, in fact, provide an assessment and information on the current pay structure, and how it relates to the various marketplaces, which would allow the city to develop a long-term strategy to adopt any of those changes in the marketplace. There may be no further business to come before the committee. We adjourned at 6:00 PM, and I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion to file the minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We will go to the Finance Committee report next, and I'm going to ask the vice chair, Councilmember Johnson, to review those minutes for us, please.
Thank you. Finance Committee met on January 28th at 4:45. All members of the committee were present, and also present were the city administrator and the city finance director. Others present included Audrey Nelson, West Central Tribune journalist David Little, and city accounting supervisor Carol Cunningham. Item number one was public comment. There was no one present at the committee that wished to address the committee that time. Item two is weight treatment rate discussion. This is information only. Staff reviewed information with the committee regarding the recent rate study completed by Springstead Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plan. The study indicates an increase in rates is necessary to fund current debt service as well as other operational costs. The committee discussed concerns raised by Eagle Lake representatives regarding proposed rate increases. After considerable discussion, it was the consensus of the committee for staff to proceed with the proposed rates as presented. The matter was taken for information only. Item number three, fund balance policy discussion. Staff reviewed the proposed fund balance policy with the committee. The purpose of this policy is to establish specific guidelines for the level of fund balances available for current and future spending in the governmental funds. It addresses minimum fund balances, as well as sets a stabilization amount for such or for use in emergency situations. U.S. generally-accepted accounting principles is a required formal policy to be adopted by the city, and this policy is to be reviewed annually. Following discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following recommendation, and I would introduce at this time a resolution to approve the city of Wilmer's fund balance policy as presented.
Second.
The resolution on the table is to approve the city of Wilmer's fund balance policy as presented. Discussion? What was it? Oh, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablik.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
Item four, miscellaneous. Chair Anderson informed the committee that Rice Memorial Hospital's payment in lieu of taxes agreement expired December 31st, 2012. Initial meetings with Rice representatives will occur within the next couple of weeks to discuss renewal. Councilmember Dacken requested to be part of those negotiations, as well as Chair Anderson. This matter, again, was for information only. There being no further business, on January 28th, the committee adjourned at 5:30, and if there's no further discussion, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion to file the Finance Committee minutes. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Public Works, Public Safety, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on January 29th, Tuesday. Item number one had to do with the 2013 improvement report. Staff presented the improvement report for 2013. It's attached to your pamphlet, in your packet. There were four categories of improvements included in the report. Those four categories were reconstruction, overlay, new construction, and miscellaneous, such as trails, quiet zones, and sidewalks. Our committee discussed the project schedule and briefly reviewed several of the projects. Following the discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution that the city council receive the report and set the improvement hearing for 7:03 PM, February 19th, 2013. And this is the resolution.
Second.
Okay. The resolution on the floor is that the council receive the report and set the improvement hearing for 7:03 PM, February 19th, 2013. Roll call.
Councilmember Aman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablik.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Item number two had to do with the Wilmer Transportation Plan. This was for information only. Our committee briefly discussed the 2003 plan, specifically as it relates to identified issues and projects. There was a general agreement that the significant portion of the plan had already been accomplished. The need for a new or revised plan also was discussed. Our committee was informed that the capital approval program shows funding for a revised transportation plan in 2015. That schedule will be maintained unless some significant transportation issue arises that requires immediate attention. Item number three had to do with our municipal code. It was an amendment for false alarms in this motion. Our new fire chief, Mr. Hendrickson, presented a proposal to change the way the city charges for false alarms. Again, there's an attachment B to your packet. The current ordinance charges $250 for false alarms, with five false alarms allowed per year without any charge. Our new ordinance proposes a $500 charge per false alarm. It would require fire alarm systems to be registered. Charges would be waived for the owner providing evidence of system servicing and repair. The new proposal also allows discretion by the fire chief in assessing any charges. The committee discussed implementation of the ordinance and how to best involve the current owners of the fire alarm systems. A motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to introduce the ordinance for a public hearing on March 4th of 2013.
Second.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to introduce the ordinance for a public hearing on March 4th, 2013. All in favor? I'm sorry, Councilmember Christensen.
If our fire chief had any comments on this for the public, it was very brief, what I described here, any further comments from you, Hunt?
Mayor Protem and members of council, the idea is to, it's kind of a fine balance, if you will. I'm trying to encourage folks to maintain their systems is kind of the key to it. Additionally, I don't want to impose too strict of a false alarm policy, because then it obviously discourages people to have a system. I think there's value to the fire department to maintain and to have a system. It notifies us early and often, if you will, of, for life safety measures, as well as property conservation, if there is to be a fire within a specific structure, versus waiting for it to show itself, if you will, outside of the structure, as a passerby or someone might come upon it. Along with this, there is obviously maintenance that needs to take place for those that have a system. There's obviously costs involved to the city as we respond out the door to individuals' homes, as well as commercial structures. And I think it provides an opportunity to encourage folks, again, like I said, to maintain their system. If they choose not to maintain their system, then we're looking at imposing the $500 fine.
Could you briefly define for the public the difference between a false alarm and a malfunction or a system failure?
Good question, Mayor. Councilmember Christensen. Within our classifications, we look at malfunctions and the operation of a system in two different ways. My interpretation of a malfunction is, the smoke detector within this particular room, say, were to activate, no smoke or fire would be present, unknown determination of why it actually activated. I don't consider a malfunction of an alarm system if it was activated by normal occurrence. Burnt food would be, in my opinion, a normal occurrence, that's what the system was designed for, to notify of, really, notification if there's a potential fire. Additionally, the use of pull stations, if a child happened to pull a pull station, again, it's not a malfunction, it's a normal operation of the system. And another example might be an unlawful discharge of a fire extinguisher by an individual, where it might activate the detector or the system within the structure. Those, in my mind, are not malfunctions. Again, a malfunction is really an undetermined cause of why the system went off, and then we're just asking those people that have the systems. the systems to maintain them, make contact with, uh, the alarm company that, uh, maintains their system and have it checked out. And if they're to do that, uh, through notification to the fire chief within five business days, then the alarm fee would actually be waived.
So then the, uh, malfunction is not a false alarm, so they don't get charged, correct?
Correct. Yeah. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a struggle to kind of define that and I try to use those examples to, to help the public understand exactly what we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Amen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, I talked briefly with, uh, Gary after, after the meeting, um, given some thought to the impact, going from $250 to $500, doubling, uh, the fee, uh, for that type of a call. And I would, I would be more receptive to a, uh, a fee structure that would maybe be, uh, for, uh, increase $150 and then another $100 to bring it up to $500 in a two-year period. I, I'm not sure what the council is, but I'd like to, I, I think it'd be, I think it'd be better for the consumer and for the businesses, uh, to see the changes, uh, a little more subtle than, rather than just a double, uh, in fee, in fee costs. It isn't an issue of, um, large money, but I would prefer that if it's possible to. And I would so move a motion, I would move to amend the motion to revise the proposed $500 fee to, uh, a total of $400 fee, uh, for one, uh, for one year after the implementation of the ordinance and additional $100 after.
Councilmember Amen, I think as a, as a point of clarification, um, the motion on the floor is to set a public hearing.
Yeah.
Am I, am I, am I right?
That may be in order just because it's like the first reading of the ordinance and you have it before you. You cannot go to a hearing with set fees.
And then change it.
And change them because it's significant to start a hearing over and republish. So he may be in order.
Yes.
Yeah, I would not rule this out of order, I think.
Yeah.
Now is as good a.
Now is the time to.
Okay.
If you don't want to go to the hearing and not allow any opportunity, then you better send it back to committee.
Right.
And deal with that issue if that, if that amendment passes. That's all I'm saying. It's in order.
That's all.
So I'd move, move my amendment.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? That motion dies for lack of a second. Back to the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries.
Um, item number four, uh, wasn't, we discussed ordinance fine amounts. Uh, this is for information only. Also, our police chief informed the committee that he was in the process of reviewing multiple ordinances that assess fines for violations, so the fine amounts would be available for the e-charging process. Um, these fine amounts will be aggregated into a database for use in e-ticketing or e-charging. Um, number five was miscellaneous. Uh, we were informed by staff that, uh, committee that process, uh, staff informed the committee that the process would soon begin to acquire the easement for the Wilmer Quiet, Wilmer Avenue Quiet Zone. Uh, the issue of easement acquisition will be taken into the planning commission at their next meeting in keeping with charter requirements. Um, Councilmember Amen raised an issue of the possibility of widening ditches to increase stormwater storage. The, uh, matter was referred to Bolton and Nick for more information regarding the city's legal authority and the capacity for doing so. Um, that was it for, uh, our meeting and if there's any questions, I'll answer them. Otherwise, I'll move to file these minutes.
Second.
Oh, I got a question.
Councilmember Fagerly.
On acquiring easements, who owns the land now? I thought the city owned most of it.
This is a, this, this property is owned by BNSF.
This is the New Wilmer Avenue.
This is for the New Wilmer Avenue and it's land that would be necessary for that and it's currently owned by BNSF. And so we would have to acquire an easement from BNSF in order to do this.
And that.
We have to pay for it too, then?
Yep. Correct. It, we don't have an easement there. It's land that's owned by BNSF and we're trying to acquire an easement from BNSF, so we would have to pay for that, yes.
Okay. What about the land that we already have on Wilmer Avenue? We just give that to the, back to the railroad? Cause I'm sure we have an easement there.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Well, we're switching directions. We're going north.
Oh, I, okay.
So, we have to have an easement now where Wilmer Avenue currently is. So what happens to that land? Cause I'm sure we bought that before.
Yeah, I don't think we're proposing to return that. I mean, we would probably maintain that easement and such, just, you know, we're not proposing, but it is, you know, because we have an easement on one side, it doesn't really help us on the other, so BNSF is, no. They're asking for it to be compensated for that, so.
What is it, a 50-foot strip?
I don't, I can't remember that right off the top of my head. I can get you that information though, but I'm not sure.
The whole thing, the whole width of the road, which would be 70 at least.
The estimated cost, I think, is somewhere around $15,000 that we're looking at, so.
We don't have much choice. They own the land. We need the easement. We want a quiet zone for sure.
Yeah. I mean, it would, it's just, it's a, the Councilmember Christensen phrased it very well. There's not a lot of options for us if we wish to go forward.
But it's a benefit for them too.
Theoretically, yes, I agree. I, I agree with you, but they, uh, I think those discussions have been, those discussions have been had. We've even had the property appraised and so.
Okay. Okay. There's been a motion to second to file the minutes. Any other comments?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. All right. Um, we'll go to consideration of amending the ordinance of the Wilmer Charter. Mr. Halliday, are you going to handle that?
Uh, Mayor Protem, members of the council, as you know, the Charter Commission has met for three years and they put a myriad of changes together that take effect March 13th. They have met the last two meetings just dealing with section 208, uh, of the appointed offices of the city. Uh, in earlier versions, they had a lot of tasks listed in the, uh, drafts that they had in this section. And through the many work sessions, I think they heard, uh, the council's concerned about having an ease with dealing with tasks for these appointed offices in ordinances and not in the charter that's harder to amend. Having heard those conversations, they have put a draft of an ordinance before you. As always, the red ink, or I guess you don't have red ink in yours, but the, uh, the underlined versions then are new additions, which is totally inclusive of the city attorney. And then the strike through in subdivision three now is, uh, pretty much to add clarity that the appointments require five affirmative votes all the way along the line, department heads in these, uh, positions. They are in agreement that it's better not to have all these tasks listed in the charter, but they certainly are unanimous that it's enumerated in a city ordinance. And so they have put this draft together and, uh, at this point, they're presenting it to you for, uh, conversation and if no opposition is there, to set a hearing for this. Again, uh, this is a date and we're, the recommendation is to go to March 4th, but, and you can have the hearing that night, but it is this adoption that requires eight affirmative votes to implement in the charter. So I know people are, uh, having busy schedules and as you can see tonight, there's only six, so, but it's not necessary that we schedule it on a night when we know there's eight council members present. It's just the vote can't be taken until eight are present. So that obviously, and the time is okay to be after the special election to appoint, uh, or to take, have the oath taken for that eighth council member. So that part is falling in line, I guess.
So you're looking for two things. One, discussion, if we concur with the, uh, recommendation and if we do, then to set the, the hearing for tentatively March 4th, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there, how do we feel about this, this, uh, section? Is there any discussion on that?
Seems, seems pretty straightforward. I mean, it's, it's, there will be an ordinance, uh, for the city administrator and one for the attorney?
Yep.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
It seems. Anyone have any concerns about that? If not, we'll take a motion.
Well, I just want, I just want to comment briefly on the letter that was sent by one of the Charter Commission persons.
I'm wondering if, if that could be heard at the, uh, public hearing.
At the public hearing, it could be.
You know, rather than, than tonight.
Okay. That's fine. I can deal with that.
Just a quick question, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, then at the public hearing, we can't amend it, correct? Could be amended if, uh, you know, after we read Mr. Thompson's letter, he's several pages long. I haven't been able to.
Councilmember Christensen, this is, uh, unique from other city ordinances in that it's a charter amendment initiated by the Charter Commission. My interpretation is that this essentially take it or leave it. Either pass what the Charter Commission has passed unanimously with every member of the council and the mayor approving, or it fails and the charter is not amended. So I don't believe it's, would be like a normal situation where you'd be able to amend this ordinance in the public hearing.
So if it fails, it can go back to the Charter Commission and they can sit, they can reconsider.
Certainly.
Whatever his concerns are here.
Certainly.
Correct? Okay.
Councilmember Amen.
Can you please clarify exactly the changes, Mr. Scott, on the revisions that we're about to approve that the Charter Commission is? You, you have in here the word, "The city council shall appoint an officer." That is what the Charter Commission is recommending, correct?
Yes. What you have in front of you, Councilmember Amen, is the wording that the Charter Commission has approved and has formally submitted to the city council for its consideration. Um, what the effect of this is, is it essentially is just saying there must be, once this, assuming this were to take effect, to comply with this provision, you, the city would need to have an ordinance that sets forth duties and responsibilities of both the city administrator and the city attorney and requiring that at least one of those duties in each case be to enforce the city charter. So in order to comply with it, because there is a city administrator ordinance, the city council would simply need to have, it would need to pass an ordinance, uh, setting forth duties and responsibilities of the city attorney, which is an action item you've addressed already today.
And then for clarity, Councilmember Amen, in the subdivision three, the portions that you see that are struck through would be deleted. Those are currently in the charter and that language would be deleted. So the underlined is new language that's being suggested and the strike through is existing language that is being, uh, recommended to be deleted.
I guess, and to add further clarity, if I may, the word "shall" is in the charter. It is not touched under the city administrator subdivision one. There is no subdivision two of city attorney. That's for, it is now added and subdivision two is struck out adding three, just moving that down. So the city attorney, uh, parentheses S, parentheses, is their consideration of both attorneys. Two or more. I guess it's just plural.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Amen, I'm sorry to pile on with more clarifications. I, I think I remember that you asked about the, um, wording in the city attorney section, which was the city council shall appoint a licensed attorney who shall be an officer of the city. Uh, I interpret this section to be the, that's one course, to appoint a city officer as your city attorney. Alternately, you may hire a law firm as, as the current situation. So either of those options would be.
Available.
Available to the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Um, if not, we need a motion to, well, let me back up. March 4th. Are those of us present going to be here that date? Okay. So, um, assuming the other two will be available, I'd like to get a motion calling for a public hearing on March 4th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. Okay. Uh, Board of Canvas meeting. Kevin, I imagine that's you.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, as you know, we have a Tuesday, February 12th election and within three days, we need to assemble a Board of Canvas to verify the votes. It is staff's recommendation that we meet on Friday, February 15th at 3:00. We're flexible with the time. Anytime on Friday would work. We expect this to take about eight minutes. It's three precincts, opening the envelope.
Okay. Can we get a motion for February 15th, Board of Canvas, please?
Also moved.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Reschedule, uh, second council meeting in February.
So moved.
Second.
The, uh, the motion would be to reschedule it to, uh, Tuesday, February 19th and that's due to the president's holiday on, uh, Monday. So has been a motion, a second to, to reschedule. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. All right. We're down to, uh, committee meeting dates and I will tell you, Finance will not meet next week. Uh, Councilmember Christensen, Public Works, Public Safety.
They will meet, uh, the 11th, Monday, Monday, the 11th at 4:45 PM. Being that you're not going to be there, we can't meet Tuesday because of the election.
Yep. Okay. Uh, Labor Committee, Councilmember Amen.
February 13th, 4:45, Conference Room One.
Okay. Community Development, Councilmember Fagerly.
We will not be meeting.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before the council?
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.